Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Public Works Session of the Nishamani School Board for Tuesday, September 13th, 2022. Ms. Burns, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mrs. Lafferty?
Here.
Mr. Linden is absent with prior notice. Mr. Cirillo?
Here.
Mr. Sporni?
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan is also absent with prior notice. We have a call.
All rise for a pledge of allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The Board met in executive session this evening, prior to this meeting, to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. Ms. Burns, do we have any announcements?
No announcements.
That brings us to Dr. McGee. Superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Just an update on our opening. On August 31st, we have our Transition Day, where our new kindergarteners come to school, our new fifth graders who are moving buildings, and our freshmen go to Nishamani High School. And for those that don't know, we graduated a class of 600-ish, and we welcomed a freshman class on that first day of what was in the computer of 780 students. That essentially calmed down a bit, as those who come tend to present themselves, those who leave us tend not to tell us, and we find some of them along the way. So you'll find the enrollment report in Board Docs. Enrollment is up a touch. As you know, we have some transportation issues as we start the year. I would say, if you're reading my emails, they are within the norm of things. We've probably forgotten what the norm is, so we continue to work them out. So I appreciate everyone's cooperation. I know our Transportation Department puts in one heck of an effort to solve things, and we had some things solved over the weekend. They did a nice job. And what happened on Monday morning, we had no power at transportation, and the buses had trouble getting out of the yard. So that plan had to wait, and we tested that out today. So tomorrow will be day two of that plan. Continuing on at the high school, our Fields Project is underway. I believe Mr. Cirillo will be giving us a little bit of update about that, or at least some of the topics. Very ambitious plan, that we'll see a complete renovation of Fields at the Shaminie High School, getting our fall season completed in the stadium, we hope, and getting things done in time for graduation. I was at the Shaminie High School this afternoon and watched our girls' field hockey team beat the Ben Salem Owls. I believe it was six or seven to nothing. They are presently unbeaten, and so is our girls' soccer team. And all the other teams have also very positive records. Middle school sports began on Monday as well. So the state of the district is outstanding. Some dates to remember, next phase is back-to-school night on Thursday. That's next Thursday, the 22nd. Our elementary schools will have back-to-school night. Thursday, the 29th, middle school, and then Thursday, October 6th, is the high school back-to-school night. And a reminder that this week, or this month, is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and Sarah Harvey at Proquesting designated this is Spirit Week. So a reminder to wear your gold. Tomorrow is Throwback Day to the 80s or 90s. Some of us will not have to throw back very far and may continue as we are. Thursday is Superhero Day, and then Friday is Go Gold. So, Mr. Allen, we are off and running and doing well.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. That brings us to our first round of public comment. Ms. Burns, do we have any?
Yes, we had one sign up. Ruth Mary?
That was a mistake in sign.
Podium is open. Does anyone wish to approach? Going once, hoist. Okay, I'm closing round the public comment. Two are agenda items, agenda action items, correct?
Yes.
2.01, Personnel Administrative Appointments Resolved at the Nishamani Board of School Directors, hereby approves the following appointment of administrative staff, and that is for Kevin Kane, Director of Pupil Services. Any comment? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
I need a second, I'm sorry.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman? Now. One. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0, correct?
Do my math real quick. Mr. Allen, Dr. Kane is in the room. I'd like to welcome him back to Nishamani. Welcome back, Kevin.
2.02, Personnel Certified Staff Appointments Resolved at the Nishamani Board of School Directors, hereby approves the following appointment of certified staff. There is one name on that list. I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes 7-0. 2.03, Personnel Support Staff Appointments Resolved at the Nishamani Board of School Directors, hereby approves the following appointment of support staff. There are eight names on that list. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, concerns? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to... I would like to entertain a motion to amend or update the action item number 2.04, the resolution relating to grandstand improvements. The resolution was provided publicly on the district's website, but initially did not include the contract amount. The contract amount was not provided public... Contract amount was not in, provided publicly as of the afternoon, September 12th, which was quite close to tonight's meeting and is a material piece of information. The correct amount became available and was added, but under the Sunshine Law, we need to approve that update or addition to the resolution. So I will move to approve adding the contract amount resolution to 2,955,445. Does that motion have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hollenbeck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions. That motion passes 7-nothing, 7-0.
Who has a question?
I'm sorry.
It's too late already, Ruth, but it's to not exceed 2.9 million.
That is correct. That is to not exceed 2.9 million. That brings us to 2.04, the high school grandstands. Whereas the Nishamani School District resolves to improve the Nishamani High School grandstands, and whereas the school district has received a proposal from Stadium Solutions, Inc., via the Keystone Purchasing Network, a state cooperative purchasing organization, and whereas the proposal from Stadium Solutions provides for a new press box and grandstands on the home and visitor sides of the Harry Frank Stadium. Now therefore be it resolved that the school district approves the proposed contract with Stadium Solutions as presented and authorizes the business administrator to enter into an agreement with Stadium Solutions, Inc., dated August 18th, 2022, subject to review, revisions if necessary, and approval by the district solicitor in the amount not to exceed Does that motion have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Comments, questions?
I just want to go on record that the reason that it's like this, not to exceed, is because at the last facilities meeting, those of us on the committee were talking about different additions that we might want to add to the original proposal. And unfortunately, bless you, unfortunately, with the timing of it, bless you, our facilities meeting is tomorrow, so we will be discussing which additions to the grandstands we're going to be doing and which we're not. That's why it's to not exceed that amount. So if anybody is interested in what they're going to look like and what we're officially doing, come out tomorrow.
Bring that motion to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That motion passes 7-0. I am now at... 2.05 was...
To amend the agenda.
Under other board business.
Oh, yeah, I gave it... That's about Steve Linden.
That's right.
About Steve.
Yes. Just a second, there's a matter of procedure here, I'm trying to...
So we're going to put it under action items because we can't put it under board business because that, those are not action items listed. Three is our items...
Or our items that are going to be.
...that are going to be in the future at the public meeting. So this is an action item, so we need to add it as a 2.05, which is not listed on here. So we'll need to make four motions.
Okay. Do I have that formal, or just make a motion to read?
Yeah, and I have an extra copy because we, it's so many motions that we wrote it out.
Okay, I have it. All right.
Do you have the extra copy, John?
Nope, I've got it, I've got it. Miss, please, my... All right. I am in receipt of Steve Linden's letter of resignation from the Nishamani School Board with an effective date of Friday, September 26th, 2022. Now, there's... Total of four motions will be needed because of recent changes to the Sunshine Act in connection with the addition of agenda items 24 hours before the meeting. Correct? So, first, it is appropriated this time to make a motion to amend the agenda to add an action item to accept Mr. Linden's letter of resignation as a Nishamani School Board of Director effective September 26th, 2022. I make that motion, does it have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bowman. All those in favor?
Questions?
Or questions?
I would have some discussion.
Some discussion?
If needed, just the opportunity.
That include public, too?
Yes.
Any questions on this? That is open to the public, too. Now, all those in favor?
Well, I was...
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We'll do it later. I'll talk about it at the end, that's fine.
What, why?
Yeah, I was going to...
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. So as a point of reference for those people in the audience or at home, or we'll find out about it, and it'll be all over social media tomorrow, Mr. Linden unexpectedly had to move out of the district. He did not want to resign. He was very much enjoying his tenure on the board and looked forward to finishing out the term, but because he had to move outside of the district, he obviously had to resign his position. So I wanted everybody to be aware of what happened and why.
Yes, thank you. I should have...
Now we can vote.
Now we can vote. I apologize, folks, this is not something we do every day, these appointments.
Adding.
Okay. Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions. The first part of that motion passes 7...
Add at the agenda item.
Add at the agenda item.
That's to add the agenda item. Now we're going to vote on accepting the resignation.
Yes. Okay, now, I would like to make a motion to accept Mr. Linden's letter of resignation as a Nishamani School Board of Director effective September 26th, 2022. Discussion.
We need a second.
And I need a second. I'll get it right. Second by Ms. Bowman. Discussion, comments? Call to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That motion passes 7-0. Now, can I ask for...
Yes.
Explain what we're...
Yes, absolutely. So when there is a vacancy based on resignation or moving out of the district, the Section 315 of the Public School Code gives the Board an opportunity to appoint a replacement within 30 days of the effective date of the resignation. And the Board has the opportunity, isn't required, to follow a certain procedure, but the Board has the opportunity to set out procedures, which is what's typically done in school districts, and that's an additional item that should be done tonight, is to set out the procedure for appointing or replacement.
Brings us to 2.05, subsection 3. I'd like to make a motion to add the action item to set the procedures to appoint Mr. Linden's replacement as a Nishamani School Director from Board of School Director from Region 1. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bowman. Any questions, comments, or concerns on that? Bring that to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes 7-0. 2.05, subsection 4. In addition, as was done with Mr. Peritano's resignation earlier this year, I would now like to make a motion to set a deadline for the submission of letters of interest and/or resumes to be considered for the appointment of the vacancy from Region 1 on the Board of Directors, Nishamani School District, by no later than Tuesday, October 4th, 2022, at 5:00 PM, to Nishamani School District Superintendent's Office. Attention, Board President, care of Board Secretary at 2250 Langhorne Yardley Road, Langhorne, PA, 19047, with interviews of candidates, if deemed necessary by the Board, and appointment to take place publicly at the Board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, October 11th, 2022, at 7:00 PM here at Maple Point Middle School District Offices, Board Room, 2250 Langhorne Yardley Road, Langhorne, PA, 19047. The submission must be submitted via hand delivery to the Superintendent's Office or by first-class US mail, but it must be received no later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday, October 4th, 2022. All submissions shall be time and date stamped upon receipt, distributed to the Board. These procedures for submission shall be posted on the district website. Does that motion have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hollenbeck. Discussion.
Yes, just want to make it, I just want to be clear about the whole process. For those people that are interested, first of all, they have to be part of Region 1, correct?
Correct.
That's Lower South plus, I guess, a little sliver of Langhorne, okay? Secondly, it cannot be done in email fashion. It has to be physically snail mailed to the Board offices.
Hand delivered.
Or hand delivered by the date that you put forward.
That's ideal.
Just wanted to have that clarification out there, so everybody understands the process. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, because I was going to say the same thing. I know when we appointed Mr. Linden the last time, we had several people try to submit interest through email, and we did not accept them. So, yes, those two ways. So thank you for bringing that up.
We'll bring that to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries 7-0. I believe that closes out that agenda item. Moving on to items for approval at the public meeting. 3.01 will be routine business matters. 3.02 will be out-of-district placements. 3.03 will be the 2022 through 2023 Bucks County Intermediate Unit Number 22, Homestead-Farmstead District Agreement. 3.04 will be the approval of civil engineering, surveying, and geotechnical agreement with Gilmore and Associates. Anyone have questions or any call to discussion on any of those agenda items we'll be voting on come the next meeting? Okay, seeing none. That brings us to committee reports. And a call to Business Operations, Mrs. Hollenbeck, please.
Business Operations, actually, meant last night. We went over the Homestead Act that we will be approving at next meeting. We also talked about some of the Fields work and the grandstands and the prices for that, but as I said, a lot more of that will be gone over tomorrow. And we also talked about working on a tax rebate coming to first responders soon. Mrs. Bowman is spearheading that, but we have, we look forward to having much more information about that. The next meeting isn't until November. I don't have a date.
16.
16. The next meeting is November 16th, thank you, in this room at 6:30. Thank you.
Brings us to Educational Development. Ms. Bowman, please.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Our next Education Development Committee meeting will be held next Tuesday, September 20th, 6:30 here in the Board Room. Some topics that will be discussed are teacher observation and evaluations, pupil services, and special ed department overview, and the high school block scheduling. So I hope anybody that can make it, please come out.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. 4.03, Facilities and Planning. In Mr. Sullivan's absence, I will ask Mr. Cirillo.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. You guys are in luck. We're going to have a Board Facilities meeting tomorrow here at 6:30 in this room. Among the agenda items for tomorrow night is quite a bit of information you may want to attend. We encourage all attendance. We will have updates on new proquesting addition, the Gilmore proposal for proquesting middle school addition, the update on the new elementary building for this site, update on our Fieldhouse project, Bucks County Intermediate Unit leases on our Lower Southampton Building as well as Samuel Everett Building, a facility study for Levittown Elementary Buildings as part of our roadmap for extended development, updates on the Nishamani High School Fields Project, the Nishamani High School Stadium grandstands that we, that Ms. Hollenbeck touched upon earlier, along with change order process and, I guess, conversation about the sale of the Heckman Elementary School. Again, tomorrow night, 6:30 PM, right in this room.
Be there or be square?
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. Yes, very busy agenda, facilities tomorrow night, but a lot to cover. That brings me right back to you, Mr. Cirillo, with policy.
Wonderful. So the next Board Policy Meeting will be Thursday, October 27th, I believe at 6:30 in this Board Room as well. Not as entertaining as the Facilities Committee, but important nonetheless. Hope you can attend.
A poor Policy Committee. A lot of important work gets done in there, but...
It does.
And that brings us to our Representative Reports, and I will start out for the IU Board with Mr. Cirillo again.
Why not? While I have the microphone, the Bucks County IU is open for in-person learning, delivering all the needed services and educational needs to all the students. If you have any questions, concerns, please reach out through the website at bucksiu.org.
Wonderful, thank you. Brings us to 5.02, the Nishamani Education Foundation. Mr. Kovitz, please.
We're on a roll. So the Board of the Nishamani Education Foundation met here at Maple Point yesterday afternoon. They welcomed some new members from the community and discussed plans for upcoming fundraisers and outreach events. The foundation will be celebrating their 30th anniversary in 2023 and is planning on a special $30,000 year-long fundraising effort to mark this milestone. Details of this campaign will be shared in upcoming weeks. The next meeting will be held on Monday, October 17th, at 4:00 PM here at Maple Point. Community members are encouraged to attend and participate.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz. Brings us to the Pennsylvania School Board Association Liaison. Ms. Bowman, do you have any news?
I have no new updates at this time. I'll work on it for next meeting.
I thank you very much. That brings us to the Technical School. I am pleased to report that the first day of school was August 31st for all students. We have 400 incoming freshmen. That's a fantastic number. We at Nishamani filled all our seats. We have a waiting list, all very good signs for the service the Tech School provides to the district and the community. It's looking up very good. There's been a number of projects going on in renovation and refurbishing some of the building over there over the summer. We were able to get into the original building. There's a couple open ceiling tiles for cabling runs, but other than that, the disruption to the students is at a minimum, and I'm glad to report that, that will continue, the updates there. Other than that, I don't have a lot of updates, other than, I mean, typical housekeeping, but I did see, we did go over the Health and Safety Plan. The Long-Term Comprehensive Plan was presented to the Board and approved grants, senior trips, field trips, and that brings us to, concludes that. I said it's mostly just beginning of the year stuff. I don't have any students on the honor roll yet to report that I... Still early. We will keep you abreast of that. We like to know what our students are doing, our Nishamani students are doing over there. That brings me to, the next meeting will be Tuesday, September 20th, 2022, at 7:30 in the Board Room at Tech School. Yes, it is. I believe there's a holiday.
There's a holiday. We're meeting on the Wednesday at the end of the month.
that we've worked, done here tonight? Seeing none, I believe that brings us to future topics. Does anyone on the Board have future topics to discuss or bring to our attention? Seeing none, that brings us to Board Comment. Board is open.
I have something. Dr. McGee reminded me that we must have had a moment of silence for Kristeva Harris, and I did not put two and two together, so my heart felt condolences... for Chris Divacaris, and I did not put two and two together. So my heartfelt condolences to the Transportation Department. He was an amazing guy. I just realized who he was. He was always Mr. Chris to my boys. So, excuse me, but he was a great guy. So, my condolences to his family. And I'm sorry I missed that earlier.
I just wanted to, again, welcome and congratulate Dr. Kane. Thank you for joining us, being part of our, our family here. So welcome aboard and we look forward to working
Again, I want to welcome you to the District. I'm looking forward to working with you. I've, may have mentioned it when we were discussing it earlier, and Anthony can tell you, a number of us are very interested in what goes on in that department. So that's either good or bad for you. Just heads up. Other than that, I want to draw attention to the Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And the Board, at Mr. Sporney's urging, reminded us that we could be showing our support. And I want to thank our Superintendent's Secretary, Donna, who worked, got us our ribbons. Want to make mention of that. Board's very grateful for that. And it's a wonderful opportunity to keep that highlight on childhood cancer awareness. I know Mr. Kovitz has mentioned, you know, it's important to him. And Dr. McGee mentioned some of the events going on to honor that throughout this month. And with that, our next meeting is... Well, I mentioned, remind you, the Facility Meeting tomorrow night and is at the 28th is our next public Board Meeting.
That is a Wednesday, folks, so...
Okay, so mark that.
There's a holiday on Monday and Tuesday, so that meeting is a Wednesday.
Okay.
Rush is Shana.
All right. And with that, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hollenbach. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're out of here. Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.